Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Adjustment meeting? My mic is not on, my mic is now on. Welcome to the Old Bridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, July 6, 2023. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting, by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, the date, the location, and the agenda of this meeting, by mailing such announcements to the home news and Tribune, by filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk, and also by posting the agenda on the municipal website. Our Vice Secretary and Assistant Planner, Ms. C., could we have a roll call?
Chairman Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Stoner.
Here.
Ms. Chevalier.
Here.
Mr. Skagno is absent. Ms. Andrews.
Here.
Ms. Testaverde is absent. Mr. Izzo.
Here.
Mr. Clancy.
I'm here.
Ms. Mont.
Here.
And myself, Ms. C., thank you.
Thank you, Ms. C., we welcome Mr. Clancy as counsel tonight. This is going to be a short evening, I'll announce applications later, but there was scheduled for three, there's only going to be one this evening if you are watching at home, I'll call them in in a little bit, we have some housekeeping issues to get done first. This is televised simultaneously, well, I guess that's not the right words, but it's televised on CATV-15, and it's also streamed on YouTube Live, so you can watch these meetings at a later date on YouTube should you need. And if you're watching us from somewhere, it's going to be a short one tonight, I think, we'll see. On the housekeeping issues, we have eight resolutions to read into the record tonight, so for the one applicant and the professional, please bear with us, okay, it's just going to take a little bit, so I thank you for that. We'll get a move forward on that, and we'll go right to the first one, it's fifty-seven dash twenty-two-two Z, Vassal Centipal, it's a D variance, Mr. Clancy?
Yes, we'll just give an executive summary, I know the board's already been provided with a copy of this ordinance, this has already been voted on, this is just a resolution. This one is for block one-three-zero-zero-five, lot fifty-five, which is also known as one-nineteen Wesley Road in Old Bridge, New Jersey. The applicant's name was Vassal Centipal, this was an application for D1 variance to erect a single-family home on the property, there was public hearings on this on May fourth and June first, you'll remember, and this was a two-point-one-two acres, it was in the environmentally sensitive recreation zone. There was a resolution, or there was a vote taken to approve this, the board found that they could grant this, there are some conditions associated with this, namely that the applicant will provide a copy of a letter of interpretation from the NJDEP to the board planner, and there'll be no commercial operations on the property, those are two additional conditions that were placed upon this. And this is up for memorialization tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Clancy, board members, I'm sure everyone was here, I believe, for this, would someone please move this for memorialization?
Connor, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Andrews, seconds, roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Stoner.
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Izzo.
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan.
Yes, the next one, board members, you probably recognize because it's in conjunction with the one that was just done, and they were joining lots, actually, fifty-eight dish twenty-two-two Z, Alessa Centipal, D variance, Mr. Clancy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and again, board members received this in advance, this is for block one-three-zero-zero-five, lot fifty-six, this is commonly known as one-twenty-three Wesley Road in Old Bridge, the applicant here was Alessia Centipal, this is also a D1 use variance relief, this is construction of a residential, single-family home on the property, this was the subject of hearings on May fourth and also on June first. The application was approved by the board with the additional conditions that the applicant provide, a copy of a letter of interpretation from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to the board planner, and also with the condition that there be no commercial operation on the property. Mr. Chairman, this is up for memorialization tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Clancy, board members, you've heard the resolution, someone move it for adoption, please?
I'll move it, Stoner.
Is there a second?
Connor, second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Stoner.
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Izzo.
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. Zero-two dash twenty-two-three Z, Mohanid Habash, major preliminary and final site plan D variance, Mr. Clancy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, again, the copies have been provided to the board in advance, I know you guys are familiar with this, this is the, yeah, we're going to the block and lot, this is for block ten, lot three-fifteen, and this is for D variance and C variance on this one. The application was put forth by Mohanid Habash, this was a major and preliminary site plan approval for change to the existing use, this was a mattress store, now it's going to be billiards and pool hall over in the Economic Development Opportunity Zone, there was hearings on this both on May fourth and on June first. The board did approve the C variance and the D variance for this, the conditions on this were that no alcohol would be served, there's no kitchen or no hot meals served on the property, and the applicant will install a security system and will not have any alcoholic beverage signage on the property, those are the additional restrictions, this is approved by the board. Mr. Chairman, we have the resolution up for adoption tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Clancy, board members, you've heard the resolution, someone want to move it?
I'll move it, Stoner.
Is there a second?
Izzo?
Izzo, seconds, roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Stoner.
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Izzo.
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. Eighteen dash twenty-two-three Z, Dominic Gilberti, C and D variance, Mr. Clancy?
Yes, this was an application for block one-three-three-zero-four, lot one, it's also known as Two Eagle Court, this was the subject of public hearings back on June twenty-sixth during our special session. The variance here was in the R-twenty medium-low-density zone, it was the floor area, was the issue on the D side, and then there were some bulk variances to go along with it, this was approved with no additional conditions other than the ordinary ones here, and this is up for approval tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Clancy, board members, you've heard it, someone want to move it?
Connor, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second, Stoner.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Stoner.
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Izzo.
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan.
Yes, we're halfway home.
Yeah, we're doing well.
Yeah, twenty-one dash twenty-two-three Z, Christopher Sherrington, C variance, Mr. Clancy?
Okay, again, board members, you've been provided with a copy of this, I know you're familiar with the application, this is block one-zero-six-one, lot two-seven-zero on the tax map, it's the two-seventy Raritan Boulevard over in Cliffwood Beach, this was an application for a C variance, there's a landscape ratio issue on this one, we heard this one back on January fifteenth of, I'm sorry, June fifteenth of twenty-two-three, C variance relief was granted by the board with the usual conditions applying, nothing additional. Mr. Chairman, for a vote?
Thank you, Mr. Clancy, board members, you've heard it, someone want to move it, please?
I'll move it, Stoner.
Is there a second? Andrews is second, roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Stoner.
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Izzo.
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. Twenty-five dash twenty-two-three Z, William Montamerno, C variance.
Yes, board members, you've received the copy of this as well, this is the application for block sixty-one, lot four-five-eight, which is four-fifty-eight Harding Road over in Lawrence Harbor, this was a C variance application, the hearings on this one were on June fifteenth, twenty-two-three, you may remember this is one where there was a deck renovation, and there was some issues with the height and with the landscape area ratio, the board did listen to testimony on this and ultimately did grant relief on this on that date, and no additional conditions other than the ordinary ones on this one, Mr. Chairman, for approval?
Thank you, Mr. Clancy, board members, someone in favor moving this?
I'll move it, Stoner.
Is there a second? Izzo, roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Stoner.
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Izzo.
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan.
Yes. Twenty-eight dash twenty-two-three Z, Fady Salama, C variances.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, again, this was, copies provided to the board, I know you're all familiar with this application, this is block one-five-five-eight-five, lot six-six-four, this was two-six-six Cindy Street in Old Bridge, this was the subject of a public hearing on June fifteenth, twenty-two-three, for C variance relief, they're looking to legitimize an above-ground pool, and there was a covered patio that was constructed, and some other setbacks that were required as a result of some stuff that was done during the pandemic, which they seek to legitimize, this was approved on that date, and there were no additional conditions to be put forth with this, so we are here for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Clancy, board members, someone want to move it for adoption?
I'll move it, Stoner.
Is there a second? Andrews is second, roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Stoner.
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Izzo.
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan.
Yes, and I'm sure everyone here in the audience will be happy to know that, this is the last one, twenty-nine dash twenty-two-three Z, J. S. Shaw, D variance, Mr. Clancy?
Yes, board members, you've received the copy of this before the meeting, and they've had an opportunity to review it, this is block one-two-two-eight-three, lot four, it's commonly known as Sixty High Point Way here in Old Bridge, this was an application for D4 variance relief, the matter was heard here on June twenty-sixth, twenty-two-three, it's a recent one, this was one over in the R-twenty low-medium-density residential zone, and variance for landscape area ratio here, and the board did approve it on that date, just looking at conditions, looks like no, nothing other than the usual conditions apply for this one, so, Mr. Chairman, we submit this for approval tonight.
And finally, thank you, Mr. Clancy, this is the last one, board members, someone move this for adoption, please?
Connor, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Chevalier, second.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Stoner.
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Izzo.
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan.
Yes, board members, under discussions, we have the twenty-two-two annual report, we're going to carry that until probably next month, I would say, I'm going to ask Ms. Mont to say something, but I would remind board members, when we go through these things all year, and you pick up on something, and you think it may need some help, or we may need to suggest this to our professionals, you know, keep those notes, I mean, it does happen, so we could try and help out the professional staff by doing so, Ms. Mont.
So, board members, if you may recall, typically, we do the annual report at the beginning of the year, but it has been a very busy year for the planning office, and we, the report is ready, but I haven't gotten a chance to review it, we have been looking at some of the recommendations, and actually, I've been working on the ordinances already, so the council has been reviewing ordinances, it's just that this report has not been complete, so I promise you, next meeting, we will have it on the agenda.
Oh, it's going to be on the agenda, will we act on it?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
All right, just, again, keep that in mind, board, we're going to move through the applications this evening, and before I call the first one in, I just want to, I did say there was three on the agenda, I'm going to announce the other two that are not going to be heard this evening, so if you're watching at home and you're looking forward to it, it's not going to be tonight, sixty dash twenty-two-two Z, Abilio and Elizabeth Techera, that's located block two-four-two-zero-four, lot two-six, physical location is two-zero-seven five English Town Road, that's for a storage building, that matter will be on the agenda for August third, no further notice, if you're interested in that matter, please come down or watch on that evening. The next one on the agenda was listed as twenty-seven dash twenty-two-three Z, that's Vision Old Bridge LLC, that's in the TCD District, so that's block one-two-two-six-one, lot six-four, physical location is three-nine-six-three, County Route five-sixteen for a multi-family building requiring D variance, that matter has been carried until December seventh, it'll be on the December seventh agenda, there'll be no further notice, if you're interested in that matter, that would be an in-person meeting, Ms. Mont.
Chairman, I would recommend that the applicant be required to send out a notice because it's a bigger project, there has been a lot of interest in the project, and we are only in July, we're carrying it to December, I think we should have the applicant send a notice, I don't know what Mr. Clancy has to say.
I believe it's at the board's discretion, but I think the, you know, Vina brings up a good point, that there is a good amount of time that's going to elapse between then and now.
We are, we're allowed to do so, though, right?
At least so, yes.
Okay, board members, I'd probably be in the best interest of the community if we do, we notice, right?
Yep, we notice.
You notice, do we need to vote on that, Mr. Clancy?
Yeah, we should.
Okay, who's in favor of making a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Chevalier, is there a second?
Is there?
There is a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Stoner.
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier.
Yes.
Ms. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Izzo.
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan.
Yes, so Mr. Clancy is representing, he'll be notified?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'm going to change that, if you're watching at home, it's still on December seventh, but there will be further notice given. Okay, that'll move us to our only application of the evening, and that was the first on the agenda, it's fifteen dash twenty-two-three Z, Robert Link, this is the medium-high-density residential in the R-six, block four-thousand-point-one-five, lot six, the physical location is thirteen Mercury Circle for a home addition requiring C and D variance, Mr. Mirabella, representing the applicant, Paul Mirabella Esquire representing, sir?
Yeah, Paul Mirabella on behalf of the applicant, it's a fairly straightforward application, originally, there was some questions as to whether they needed an F.A.R. variance, and it turns out that they did not, there was a miscalculation that we straightened out, there are other, there's three pre-existing conditions that have already been the subject of prior approvals, so the only variance that we require tonight is the front setback is eighteen-point-eight-one-eight feet, where twenty-five feet is required, so I'm going to ask Mark Lieber, our planner, to come up and testify.
Thank you, sir. Word Attorney, swear you in, Mr. Lieber.
Do you solemnly swear that any testimony you provide before this board will be the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Okay, can you just state your name for the record, please?
Hi, good evening, it's Mark with a C, last name is Lieber, L-E-B-E-R, with East Point Engineering in Marlboro.
Mr. Lieber, you're recognized by the board, would you just, for those at home, that you are a licensed engineer and, I think, planner?
Yes, I am.
You're presently licensed in the state, and you've been practicing for how many years?
Since ninety-nine.
Okay, thank you very much, the board's familiar with you, but those watching may question who you are.
Thank you, I've got a couple of photos I want to hand out, they're actually taken today, so.
Is there any exhibits that we're going to, Mark, I know there was, I think, three things that the professionals reviewed, are we going to mark those, or you don't typically do that?
It was a plan set.
Yeah, there was the application, there was a variance plan, and there was some architectural plans.
If you want to enter them, yeah, right, why not?
I think they were part of the submission, so we typically do not mark them, but these definitely should be marked.
Okay, that's fine, so photographs are going to enter. So that's going to be A1?
A1 is a set of one page, right?
You're footing back, though.
Yeah, it only needs one number, I think it's one item, so A1 sounds good.
All right, so, once again, this is block four-thousand-point-one-five, lot six, it's thirteen Mercury Circle, this lot is about seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eight square feet, situated in the R-six single-family residential zone, presently, there's a single-family dwelling on the property, that dwelling was built in the late nineteen-fifties, these photos were taken this morning, starting with the top photo, that's just a view of the front of the house, you'll notice that there's a garage door on the left, and its entrance is adjacent to the garage, it's a single story, it's actually a story and a half the dwelling, the bottom photo, standing in the front-left corner, just looking, you know, toward where the road goes around the bend, if you go to the back, I have two photos of the rear of the house, one of them is, I guess, the rear-right corner on the top, and then photo on the bottom shows the rear-left corner, that garage door is, it's a through garage, you could actually pass through from the front where the street is out to the rear. So, there's a couple of additions proposed on the house, first of all, in the back where that deck is personally located, there is an eighteen-foot-seven-inch by forty-foot-two-inch addition, which would contain a new master bedroom suite, beyond that, there'll be a new deck, and that deck would be twenty-four feet by twelve feet, in the front of the house, there's a front porch addition, the existing bay window is going to go away, and the front porch will be built out towards Mercury Circle, the width of that is nineteen-foot-four-inches, and it comes out of the house seven feet, the second floor of the house is going to have two dormers added, as well as a new bathroom constructed upstairs, and then on the right side of the house, there'll be some new Bilco doors, the reason for that is because the existing Bilco doors are in the back of the house, with the addition, they'll be covered up, so they need to put them on the side of the house. Now, there's two non-conformities that are existing with the application, first of all, you have a side yard setback requirement of a ten-foot minimum, and if you look at the house presently, the left side yard is six-point-seven, and the right side yard is eight-point-eight, so neither is ten feet, and we also don't comply with the combined side yard of twenty-five feet, we only have fifteen and a half feet, so that's, that's an existing non-conformity, it's not affected by the application, but nonetheless, it is an element of this property that I did want to point out, the other item is, on the back of the house, there's a shed there, which our surveyor indicates is on the property line, accessory structure in the zone should be ten feet off the line, so that shed is really on the line, again, that's existing, it's actually visible in the photo, if you look at the two photos in the back, you could see the shed on the right side. So, getting back to the variance, you look at our plan, which is dated December eighth of two thousand twenty-two, in the front of the house, we have labeled the front porch addition, drawing the front yard setback, it would become eighteen-point-one-eight feet to the right-of-way line, just to put in perspective, there is a porch on the house right now, which you could look back at the photo, the distance from the right-of-way line to the bottom step today is just around nineteen feet, that porch would go away, basically, and you would have a new covered porch addition, which would come off the front, if you look at the architectural plan prepared by Jason Peis, he has a front elevation drawn, the porch really adds a lot of character to the house, you know, the house is from the late fifties, they want to modernize it, you know, older houses don't have a lot of convenience in them, so this would give a lot of usable space to the homeowner, but the porch is covered, it does create a variance, I did take a look around the neighborhood, it is a difficult house to work with, only because the front of the house is already on that twenty-five-foot setback, so it's really, anything you do there is going to require relief, but my opinion is, for somebody driving down the street looking, this is not really perceptible that they would know that, hey, that's a variance, to me, the aesthetics would certainly outweigh the detriment of having this inconsistency with the front setback, there are other homes on the street that have similar covered front porches, and I just really didn't see any detriments, when you look at the architecture of the front porch and the two new dormers above it, kind of changes the whole look of the house, but it is in a much better way, so I think that the benefits of that change and modernization and the attractiveness of what the architect had designed would outweigh any perceptible variance of a couple of feet in the front yard, we still comply with lock coverage requirements, floor area requirements, building height requirements, there's no other relief that we're asking for, but... There's no other relief that we're asking for but the front porch setback. Are there any questions?
Mr. Swan?
I really don't have any questions. I just have a comment that this application actually should have been in front of the zoning board for a C night. And what happened is, when I started reviewing it, Natalie started reviewing it, we recalculated the floor area ratio, and we discovered that they comply. But by then, the notices were sent out, and we decided to just continue at a D night, and that's the only reason why they are here, but I think it's a pretty straightforward application.
Thank you, Mr. Swan.
No problem.
Mr. Lieber, would you, would you say that a lot of the homes there probably violate the, the porch violates the setback because they were all put at twenty-five when, when they were built?
It seems that those porches that are added, were added later, because the character of these houses, I think they're called manor homes, they're all story and a half, pretty much built on the line. You know, that's consistent with how the neighborhood was constructed, so, you know, I don't know if all those houses came before the board, or perhaps they skipped that step, but there are certainly other houses with covered porches in the front.
I'm, I'm certain that there are. Would that involve a, a C hardship, the fact that they really can't do anything because they're on the line?
So it seems like it's, yeah, the, the way the property is constructed, it appears that the property is uniquely situated in so much as that when the house was constructed, they brought it right up to that front setback, which, you know, it's been there for a long time. Lord knows what the history of the zoning in the area has, has been since the house was constructed, but effectively, any improvement on the front of the house would bring them in front of the board as, as, as we have tonight. So it certainly seems like they've, they've established that there is a hardship here.
Okay. Mr. Swan?
So the one thing I noticed from the aerials is there are other homes in the neighborhood that also violate the front yard setback. In fact, they are much closer to the right-of-way than the proposed front yard setback, so I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
Let me see if any of the board members have any questions, Mr. Mirabella. Mr. Izzo? Ms. Chevalier? Mr. Stoner?
No.
Vice Chairman? Ms. Andrews? Anything else?
I think that's it.
Let me go to a public portion, okay? We'll see if either of these gentlemen have anything to say. This is matter fifteen-dish twenty-two-three Z. Location is thirteen Mercury Circle for.
They're the applicants, by the way. One's the applicant.
I knew.
Oh, okay. The way you said it, I was like, are they strangers?
You don't. So you don't come here enough. Mr. Lieber wouldn't recognize my humor, but you, you obviously did not.
Okay.
Take that into consideration. Put that down in your notes.
Okay.
This is for one-story addition. Anyone here in the courtroom wish to be heard on this matter? I think it's the applicants who are here, so they're not going to speak. I'll close the public portion. Final comments, sir?
Nah, it's pretty straightforward. You know, this really doesn't create any hardship. Certainly, there's no detriment, and I think it fits in with the character of the neighborhood.
And I, I tend to agree with you. We see these a lot, and particularly with these extensions. We've talked about this, you know, when, we were just talking about an annual report, and this is something that, that we may have to, you know, look at when they have these short extensions, you know?